Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here.
Treasurer Corstang.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, is there a motion or discussion for approval?
Sure.
Sorry. Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with one note, just to make sure that there is noted that... It's going on. We have a little bit of pause.
Yes.
Please rise. I'll request your flowers. I'll make a motion to approve the tonight's agenda with the one change, the change that is active to the ARCA number is noted and that you, of the representative of the state, is in active online as well now, correct? Just to clarify, we're talking about Article 9, first, if this is one and that would be the minimum amount or replace the previous, no, in fact, it's not completely correct. And just one note, Article 12, closed sessions tonight that we have followed, like a portion of public comments, that is pursuant to MCL 15.26, session 18, specifically, it's a closed session of this quarter, we need to discuss pending litigation in the case of Sierra Law of Warner National Airport versus Cascade County. Okay, thank you. That's a motion by Treasurer Corstang, supported by Trustee McDonald to approve tonight's agenda, all in favor of the group opposed. Motion carried. Do we have the presentation? Anything? Article 12.
Oh, go.
Right, what?
Yeah.
Okay. Five, anything, countable, anything that is already on tonight's agenda? Now, you have two board actions about formally allocating federal funds. One is related to the national opioid settlement and how those will be used. And then secondly, federal funds for triple down state and local municipalities are related to the former pandemic and how those are spent. So in addition to that, we also have a discussion about the new, uh, your... Does anyone want to comment on those specific? I got the floor. The guy told that.
I didn't want to comment about that. I, uh, Thomas, you just have to see the videos. You guys were saying they talked about multiple parcels and brought it in. They're talking about multiple, multiple parcels that are owned by the township and the last maintenance, and I brought in a meeting from one of those parcels to show that. So can we put a little more detail in there that gets crazy? Thank you. So I'm just bringing a beat just for funsies. It was from one of the county township owned buildings. Was it that, you know, it was kind of like, uh, on my radio and part of the report is very, so, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? We're not virtual right now. They are, but we're not videoing. And there's no public comment. That's why I put this laptop really, really close to you, but I can get a mic out. Should I get a handheld so you can speak into it? Okay. Okay. More of the first little, yeah.
Did you really get that?
Okay. Article 10, is there, uh, open or just have a move on tonight's agenda?
Sure. We make multiple things down there. There's a present.
And what about, um, comments about the county for working minutes from July, from July 10th here? Just a little more specific. Comments on the last maintenance on some of the others? Last maintenance and several people are talking. So. That's. It's a tax being. In the minute.
Where the mobiles up?
Um, in the minutes, the first person who spoke talked about tax maintenance. They're noted in minutes. It doesn't specify he was questioning the industrial tax abatement, what was his broad statement about tax abatement. It appears that we're giving them out or not, it was a specific industrial tax abatement. It was on that next agenda and that's where the person who spoke talked. I just think that's. Pointed by. Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee Nordhook to approve the entire present agenda. Trustee Nordhook.
Absolutely. You are my attorney.
With the two changes that's related to digitalized, uh, point eight four, draft, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions, specifically invoices scheduled to be paid on July 25th. There are multiple discussions.
Make a motion to approve. Shipley supporters.
Motion by, supported by Trustee Shipley, all in favor. Both. I think here, having no one who finished this end, Article nine, do this end. But work, ARCA fund review. Financial director, if you can walk us through.
Good evening, supervisor. Thanks for having me here. So, we've got the board action concerning the ARCA money, the township that I received. All municipalities received ARCA funds, some more, some less, based on population. Cascade Township received a little over $2 million in 2021 and 2022. Uh, these are federal funds, so there are very specific rules and procedures to expend those dollars. And our auditors, who were engaged to prepare a special audit, again, because these are federal funds, there is a special audit procedure. In the audit that is presented in June, they noted that a portion of the funds were spent and the funds were reported correctly, they were spent correctly. And there was no specific in board minutes mentioned that the board had approved the expenditure of these. And so what this memo is, is a review of the dollars received, the dollars that have been spent. Every, okay, for one, which we will smile and say, this is what we want to do. And then we'll satisfy our budget. You know, so that they're sort of reported on their side. And I believe there truly was more in the works, I just wasn't in the notes. So if you look to the second page of the memo, this is where the most changes occurred from the metal that was in the packet to this current memo. The township manager, not the county, but the personnel and finance committee this afternoon and reviewed some of the expenditures. And based on notes, historical notes that mentioned bridge and paths, there were a couple of assumptions on which bridge and which path. So therefore we get a new version of the map. So we mapped out that this little over $2 million, there are five projects. One is the fire station, number one construction. There was a million dollar contribution from ARCA towards that building to keep our funding lower. And there is a pedestrian bridge on Cascade Road, $250,000. This was addressed in last board meeting. And this ARCA money is actually funneled to the RBA, who then goes to the pedestrian bridge in Cascade Road. Um, so there's 250,000 ARCA dollars in that project. Five ARCA money. Oh, no. Like, if they're in that.
In front of that, sir. My church, I am reading off the packets. Let me get my own updated memo.
And, and for the audience, here's an update, I have something here.
It's Saturday. And this is the pedestrian bridge over the four hours. Yeah, that was movement. Um, there's half million dollars for the pedestrian bridge cascade. Uh, there was a $350,000 expenditure for the trolley piece last year, early this year. A new item is the white list park plan. The board action approved this project. And the board action approved spending $200,000. The board action didn't clarify the funds. Because this would be a permanent funding source to cover debt. And then the renovations and repairs at Taco with $400,000 is in the 24 budget. And those are in progress. So that's the detail of where the township is looking to commit. A hundred dollars to buy projects. The total is 2.1 million, which is more than the $2 million in ARCA funds. And we are earning interest on the ARCA dollars. And on the third budget guidelines, that interest does not need to remain in the ARCA fund, but I am recommending that we retain enough interest in the ARCA fund so that the ARCA principal and the ARCA interest are revenue covers these planned expenditures. And at the point where we have collected enough interest in the ARCA fund, that the board directs that any additional interest be booked into the general fund. That is allowable movement of dollars, hopefully, that the board continued us on. Let's see what else. I don't want to go on without any. Shut up.
I just want to add that and clarify the difference between the panel that submitted the original package for tonight. So there was a pedestrian bridge, uh, in the Bourbon Street, pedestrian bridge, it's on the 19th of August. That was on the initial memo, I just want to talk to the funding of that. But that is still an ongoing project, it's due in 2025. And that funding is all that allocated to the state. State brings in the SCAS and able to secure $3 million for that. We've already received half of it, but that funding is completely separate than the ARCA funding. Still, I'm in progress. Then I, I move to approve plan that's setting up the funding for five projects. And then off of. The proof point.
Support and by, by trustee, to approve the plan as stated in the second memo. Spend the ARCA funds on five projects. Authorizing the general fund after. All in favor?
All right.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next, item 062, 2024. Consider approval of the opioid plan. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor. Um, before you, we have the RBA on our opioid dollars. These are not, these are not grand dollars, these are lawsuit settlement dollars. So they're treating, they feel a little bit different counting. Um, there are many, many, during the transaction lawsuits, they are being settled at times that just seem very random. And the township manager, the township is being asked to opt in and sign many legal documents. Um, I feel that for a strong board oversight and management, that it would be a good, good, good idea for the board to authorize the township manager to sign the legal documents on the township. And then once we've signed the documents, uh, we, uh, each settlement has a different payment plan. They range from anywhere from six to 18 years. Each seller can have different guidelines on how these funds are to be expended. Many of those guidelines are similar and they're, um, in common is a, in fashion, a document that says we gave the creation. Uh, the only reporting, again, this is lawsuit fund, settlement fund, not different. The only reporting required is we have to report that we did not spend the funds as intended. Which is a pay negative report. And so all we have to do is make sure that we're following one of those items on address. Uh, the money is very variable. You think that, well, it's settlement, it's mapped out, uh, how much money we should receive and when we should receive it and actuality as it's found. Here's a payment plan, uh, plaintiffs, or I'm sorry, defendants, you get a little E-bike. Um, so the township is also paused when we receive a, it's, uh, no, they're 1,400. And it's just, there's a lot of work to do between the aspect of the, and again, those are sitting in the main article. Currently, we have about $16,000 running through that and receive. Uh, we have booked a receivable based on the settlement that we have signed. And the receivable is so tricky in terms of when we receive it and if we will, because all these companies are. Which may not discharge the debt, but would significantly slow down the payment. Uh, with all these gifts and, and just, it's very squishy. And I'm proposing major recommendation of that, the first thing we do is look through our township books and find expenditures that township is needing to mitigate the opioid effects that's affecting this news on our community. And after that, when we are engaging in projects with partners, that we keep mind of these dollars and see if we're working with a partner that has that expertise. And that these dollars could, could enhance the fund, such as when we make out a, um, a population living in good times. And this would be a perfect project to, if we look at that, you know, those families, um, to engage network one meeting or another community partner that has the expertise and really make use of that. So once again, it's getting way more than you think, I'm rambling. And then is that the nation?
Oh. I have a concern about some of the problems and the hotels they have at the place. I think that just funding, being able to use it effectively, as you put it, um, can help with some of our issues along the way you see that hotels. That's all I have.
Hey, can we just outline how we're going to allocate the same for our settlements?
What I think of the first is the $15,000, how we allocate, justify that. We've both just got, you live in here, it comes to ways to do that. But then there's also.
No, the 16,000 is cash.
Right. We've got that, yes. So we have to stay home. We're going to spend it and have to identify that. And she puts some, you know, future days and that. And then the drugs, because we have overdoses that we may have spent on. Those are good uses, no good holes, and I think that would be very justified. The second issue is the, probably $60,000, they are, they are, you're kind of, it seems like you're, you're applying there that we ought to remove that receivable altogether off books within the year. Are you saying for this that they may be removed, um, altogether at the end of this year or that would you recommend?
That will be an accounting, uh, decision made between the township and our auditors. And at that time, we'll look and ask really how many of these companies have filed for bankruptcy? And also what are other municipalities doing? Uh, this is the first I've, I've been involved in three municipalities that have received opioid money. And this is the first receivable I have seen settled. Uh, because the, the money is so, again, squishy.
Right. You guys changed, so why, why we have our book?
Wait, you know, there you go.
They're not on the book.
There you go. I'm just going on about this, that it really won't be a poor decision to make that decision. It's more, like, a gap, generally accepted, I suppose, gas, we, government, standard board. We'll look for higher, look for higher margins.
You have another margin, you know, like, try that, okay? Try that yourself, however, if you're not working, it's not an interfere. You still have to find a force to be there, like I said, it's a betting, you may never see it. But is there a way that we find track that? I don't want to speak, I'm, you have to learn by speaking, the receivable, when we receive it, book it in our books. We don't know what we're ready, everybody working. Oh, okay. I thought when blood is received, the book doesn't seem full, and at that point, we'll make the decision as to where they expect. A lot of the things that we're already doing in regards to sheriff's office and with our fire department, they are a qualifying activity that would, this is a, you know, we expect. So when you're saying receivable money that we just received one day, we're like, oh, you know, that's coming today. Oh, okay. And that makes. I thought it was. Yeah, well, we don't. Yeah, so for instance, just last week, we received one project. And it was signed, submitted that, in part of that agreement, gave a percentage of 0.0134. I mean, it was a very long number. All the communities that were, that are going to get this were listed on there, but it doesn't say how much. It just says a very small percentage of whatever. So we signed it, sent it back, we'll see, we don't know when. No. Nope.
For some. Tax, but it's not.
I don't know.
Remember we got the ARCA funding, now we can, well, we have $30,000 tax.
No. No, I think that was a, like, a receipt.
Yeah.
It's very challenging, you know, you have to study that. No. We can sit on those dollars.
Okay.
We have a really long term. And that is not, that's the rules. We would not have to report a negative event by not spending. And except inside our books, we, we need to do something that this is the school of the dollars. And, you know, and I don't want to, but it is a, it's not a balance for years. It's before it's.
See. That's not, but we have to do that with the two base operations. We've passed over five, don't know what the.
The state of Michigan gets the dollars and the state, they decide, have a, there's a special state agreement in this population base.
I'm sure someone just bought something. I love that. Back to the promotion. Thank you.
Well, that is a question that will be approved the action that is, uh, carried. Under the, the point.
Motion by, uh, Dallas, please, approve. Motion by thousands, please, approve. Made regarding the opioids settlement. Exactly as stated in the RBA or H. All in favor? Oh. Motion here. Uh, I have no discussion items tonight. No comments now is the time for comments on anything. On tonight's agenda or also in general. Welcome, sir.
Evening. My name is Tom. I have a sleep, please. I would be sitting on my patio, which looks over, looks over the fire. But one of the things I have to deal with my, is the noise of going through the drug. Early name until dark and weekends, almost nice stuff. There's almost continuous points, I would say, some of it is from motorcycles. Some of it is from sort of drivers' cars. And they all seem to like to accelerate from asking for a forward drive at an intersection and then go through the curves faster. So I'm here today to ask two questions. And then we get the Sheriff's Office to see control in that area, whether they are. And secondly, do we have the voice organs that could be in force? So that's all I have.
And I'm here to bring up a lot of elections in Washington, I agree. And some things were brought to my attention about non-citizens that are unamended. Motor, they call it motor voter. When you go to the D F B, it obviously registers you. I had so many people knowing about elections, they brought up that their fifteen year olds got the, when they got their learner's permit, it's got something in the mail. And it's unclear whether or not, some people get confused, something I would press over as a T ballot or whatever, as opposed to the actual ballot. So, and they didn't want to, they, it was confidential, it was told this person. She asked me, oh, I just need to, I don't know, check for the age. Um, I'm looking at what it, that's, here. But that's one thing. The other thing that's been brought up is that we get non-citizens to get out of voter polls because non-citizens can get driver's licenses, if they have legal presence in the U S. Plus, they can also get social security numbers too. Neither one of which tells whether they are citizens or not. It doesn't say whether they're a citizen, not a driver's license or a social security card. So I have a couple of that. Year one, I'm part of a mission for fear elections group that has been, kind of worked for us, heard about this. And citizens that want to be, that are non-citizens or people that want to be citizens, don't want this happening to them. And they have to like go and send a postcard to like act out of it. Get out of it, otherwise they'd be denied essential citizenship. So, um, what I have here is local, American people, American first people, send letters to all the governors in the U S. Explain to them what to do, where is the, the Department of Homeland Security. I just wanted to give this to the clerk or deputy clerk. So that you guys only have this information because according to M C L, the clerks are in charge of keeping voter polls clean. And so I want to get that this information. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Be attentive to place.
Well.
Yeah.
All right, the cats were always. And the last meeting made a good laugh about the cascade sign. And so it was hoping that during the comments section of the board and the committee, we'll discuss what then that would be.
You mentioned that we ended the strike way that I need to.
Yeah.
Oh.
There's, I think the voters or something, what, what's going to replace the temporary signs at White Harbor? And I understand that what we're waiting for is a decision about a new logo or a new branding. And although I missed the number of meetings over the years, I, and maybe you've discussed this, but it'd be great to have a discussion before you spend that money about, I'm not sure what we can do in terms of branding or a new logo. And then, there is a gentleman here at the last meeting, he ducked left. And then he's not supposed to walk his dog through the cemetery that he did. And the dog was chasing around, dog had a hill because somebody took down a fence. Right, they took it down a fence, so that could be a true. And I'm just wondering if that fence has been put back and we didn't take it, did we? It should be, you know, took it down. Do you remember the problem?
We can, so we have a closed session. But then normally the board, we answer contact, we're kind of avoiding the main like town hall where it's just informal back and forth. We've had those in the past. But because we've got a closed session that coming, so you guys don't have to stick around, we can address that at the end of the public round. So I'm taking note.
Okay. And then the last thing. Um, one, one financial resource. There is thirty four, thirty four, but you're crossing bridges and you're not on this area that you don't know what road it is. And I think we can, we just can't spend, we can't cost a lot of money. We just got, both sides of the bridge, one side of the bridge. So it's just something for the board to consider.
Thank you.
I want, and whoever, I think this, it had to send an email to a few people with the township, the buildings in my house. They did obviously clean up the village area quite a bit. Managed to do that in the email. Um, I think it's ended Monday and it's gone by the day, so I appreciate it. And I also did touch base again also with our history, the boss out there. At their, I know you guys are looking at the huge dilution time. That would probably mold in there or maybe it's a little vague or something, but it's something to consider. And obviously, I think she also, and it wasn't me. And it's for the, for the, for the. It didn't blow, but. I don't know, I appreciate the, the, the. And, oh, and that was also a good idea. Obviously, they're reviewing the parish and paths and, and that's what this is. But they didn't choose. And they are passing. Pretty much everything other, per, you know, by the speed. Oh, one other thing. The pathway, as we have instead did, I mean, most recently, you know, the path support. Now, it is, you only have the one. At the end of the year, there's a lot of them. But it gets the Mars, it has one each, so three across. And it gets. Okay, I mean, there's a little sign under where it says, we're moving across, and it's a little sign. And I thought we were getting a new sign, maybe the likes of something like that. I just thought, the township wanted to sort of assist it. So we have one thing here, Craig, is the, 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 also the finish, fresh, like, right, right about the curves. Just, you know, you have a fence, you have a plaque over here, and yellow or red sign. You know, it just lacks.
First, for example, for drive, um, speeding and knowing the general portion. If you're specifically, you did enforcement and then all the other.
Sure. So in regards to the noise, we could, like, share our office and talk a little about some sort of speed control. In regards to a noise, you can only imagine how hard it is to enforce a noise, but it's difficult as they're traveling down the road. So I'm not really sure that that's force of action to enforce it. But I'm here with the sheriff and I talked to him about the concerns.
But temporary speed, I think, baseline that we need to rally.
They just want to. Yeah, it would affect, uh, risking the way, uh, towards village. They're signing it up, especially when we do it for the next slide. You can see brake flags. So that is the effect.
And sir, I, I guess we were talking about. Thank you. Motorcycle love, for our drive.
We will, I guess that, I think one of the next concerns was the signage that people do in regards to rebranding. I haven't had a chance to look at that specifically as we got a legal, everybody's.
And I was really bad. We take that number of events and say, okay.
In regards to the signage, I'm kind of a college guy. By foot park is not, it's all, not the only location looking at the moving signage. Uh, we are looking at branding, that's what I say, wants to be in regards to bike of sign. Um, that it's, it's very natural where it's at, so that they usually kind of, okay. And so the brand is saying that they usually kind of, so we're still working on that. Right? It's not a very, that is what we hear, um, that our really grounds crew have been attracted to the monitoring that's initially taken back down. And as I said, the board, we're resigning, we've worked that out with the project. Are we doing that bridge this fall? So that's a, that's a really good suggestion. That's actually kind of a real commission to get better.
There was a, um, mention too, or the idea of since we're doing those enhancements to the bridge, they're all set and not needed for that.
I think the last thing that I brought up, the whole company, is the pathway signs. The Allen Cox pathway is actually the front, uh, plaque and the finish were actually privately donated. There's enough township dollars, we will be consistent with the other market, the walk pathways and ports as well. But the, the two things that are out there right now, those were private.
Great, thank you.
On our census and registered duties, and so my understanding, pre-registration does not become that a factor into complete. And we go.
Yeah, so Dorothy, it is state law now that sixteen and a half and seventeen year olds can register. They can even get that I D card, but they're not allowed to vote.
It's a preregistration.
There is a preregistration, but we are allowed to register them early. But on our voter file, it says they can't, we can't issue them a ballot until they're eighteen. So even if they do get that I D card and that teal sheet, they're not getting a ballot.
Are we required to register them?
Am I required to register them? They can register through the state on that flyer, there's a Q R code. Um, yeah, state law, we are. And then, you, you're right, when someone applies for a driver's license, if they don't uncheck the box, whether they have a green card or a legal immigrant situation, they can get a driver's license and they can automatically be enrolled. Now, they don't want that because if it, when they try to go for citizenship, that's a huge, that's a felony. No, no one going for naturalization. It's been happening since before twenty twenty. Like, this is not new. This is old. But there's awareness. So now I can tell you in Cascade, we look through our rolls every year. And we check citizenship, we make sure that that's checked. We have a list of people who did not check it and we don't issue ballots to and that we are watching, we've never wanted a ballot. But, so yeah, you're right. It's a governor thing, it's in the system, it's not something that we can change. Like here on a local level. But that's the start, the letter.
Those white signs, I think those, talk of, uh, it would be anticipation of the formal opening or back in May. Um, they're temporary and we'll get something that. More suitable than all wooded areas. They were kind of just trying to get ready for the open, they are temporary. They don't, they're a bit. Any other? Article twelve, quote session for doing to act two, uh, two, seven, and nine, three, six, M C L fifteen point two six eight, section eight of statute E. Specifically to discuss pending litigation, um, the case of Jero R Ford International Airport versus Cascade County Township. It says zoning dispute. If there are motions, enter executive session.
The next motion to go to executive session?
A motion by Frances Shipley, supported by Martha, to enter, um, executive session. That material, all in favor? Thank you. First item, this is all real. Dr. McDonald. Dr. Martin.
Yay.
Yes.
Park down, yes. Second, yes. Motion here, enter now, vote session.
Move, go ahead. Or?
What do I, Dr. McDonald, or do I, Dr. Shipley, to go back to the double session, all in favor? All in. Motion here, enter back in the session. Article thirteen, do you have comments? Board member comment?
One other thing I have to say, if anybody's out there in, uh, computer land, thanks first, any stuff.
Uh, the motion? What do I, Dr. McDonald?